At this time, we're going to move up item 8A1. I know Councilman Ryan is going to need to leave us this morning for in a few minutes. It'd be nice to have all of the council here when this item is discussed. So item 8A1, this is the proposed agreement with Professional Economic Development Services with the Alliance for Economic Development of Oklahoma City. I think we have some citizens who have signed up to speak.
And I have a lot of handouts.
All right, some handouts are coming.
That's my first amendment.
Right. Is that what's being handed out?
The amendments.
Yes. Kenny, you want to go over the amendments that are being handed out to the council?
Yes, Wiley Williams was going to do that.
Since the meeting on the 12th, there's been several meetings with council members and John Williams representing the Alliance concerning proposed amendments to the agreement that was presented to you on the 12th. In your council memo that went with your packet on Friday, there's three amendments that were proposed there. The first one, as a result of a meeting with Councilman Shadid and Councilman White, and it deals with Section 3 of the agreement. And in that amendment, the Board of Directors of the Alliance is agreeing that it will not make public policy decisions and that those, all public policy decisions will be retained by the appropriate public bodies, including the city and the trust. Then there's a proposed amendment to Section 4E concerning records and reports, and it says that periodic reports shall include but not be limited to financial report statements itemizing the use and expenditure of all public funds received by the Alliance. This is to make it clear that they have to provide a report periodically of how much funds they have used or how they've spent the public funds paid to them for their services. And then in Section 12, there's a complete rewrite of the disclosure of documents. And in there, there's a reiteration that the Alliance does not make public policy. And then there were exceptions retained that are currently in the Open Records Act that apply to the State Chamber of Commerce. And we negotiated that those particular protections will remain. And it says that certain professional services rendered by the Alliance in fulfilling the scope of work have been performed by city employees. So anything that a city employee comes in contact with, whether it's myself or Brent Bryant, those documents retain their status as open records. And then we've agreed that the Alliance is not obligated to make public for inspections the same records that the Chamber, State Chamber of Commerce may keep confidential. And those are business plans, feasibility studies, financing proposals, marketing plans, and financial statements, or trade secrets submitted by an entity seeking economic development assistance. It's just those documents that they submit that they're allowed to keep confidential. And the same thing applies to proprietary information submitted by the business. And then documents that are submitted to the Alliance for purposes of evaluating and advancing an economic development prospect, those are the same provisions that we currently have in the city that we can keep confidential. That remains. And then we make it clear that if at any time the Open Records Act is interpreted to say that these documents have to be provided, they'll be made available. That was those three. And the Alliance has agreed to those. And then since Friday, we've had other meetings with council members McAtee, Councilman Shadid, and Councilman Skip Kelly. Staff members have met with them. And there's three new proposals. There's a new addition to Section 5, a new subsection H. And this has to do with Councilman McAtee's request for some kind of method of evaluating the efficiency of this organization. And I think it's been agreed that that's hard to quantify in today's terms, but that that will be developed over the initial part of this agreement as it's put in place. And I think that satisfied his concern that he raised at the last meeting. And then the city auditor met with Councilman Shadid to discuss the audit clause. And the Alliance has agreed to make, the trust can now dictate what documents they get to see as opposed to the Alliance having to be reasonable. We've switched that, so it's now completely whatever the Economic Development Trust wants to see or the city auditor on its behalf, they will have to produce. And then we met with Councilman Skip Kelly. And there was a modification to the scope of work, which is attachment A to the agreement. And in one of the bulleted points of what the lead administrative entity is going to do, the Alliance, they've been asked to provide recommendations and consultations to address the leakage of retail and other commercial businesses and to address the advancement of commercial and retail economic development opportunities in the northeast and southern portions of the city. They've agreed to provide that. So all six of those amendments were acceptable, as we understand, to the council and to the Alliance and could be considered as a total package of amendments, if you want to entertain that.
Okay.
If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
We may be driving you back up. Yeah, that will be voted on in item 8A1. We'll accept that. But first, we have some people that have signed up to speak, and I think there's a list of people. We'll go ahead and hear from them. David Glover, we'll ask people to keep their comments to three minutes left. Good morning, David. We'll need your name and address for the record.
It's on the card. David Glover, TG73 Downing Street. The city council priorities that are right outside, the number one is preserve and grow citizen confidence and trust in city government. And although the amendments are excellent, I would say that the process and scope of what's happening could do more to harm that number one priority than almost anything I've seen in a while. The comments that I have are also from Doug Loudenback without his permission, but on one of his sites that, and I'm friends with him. Doug's a big supporter and historian in Oklahoma City. Skip said last couple of weeks ago, "If it's not broke, why fix it?" Everything that's occurring in economic development seems to be occurring. Nothing has ever been lost because of it. Case reduction, cost reduction, hopefully it'll be brought up today because Larry McAtee brought that up, and we're wondering if it's actually going to cost less. I'm concerned with the erosion of the power from the council to the Alliance. Pete White made this point before. Because it is citizens' tax dollars. What I think might be occurring is we're somewhat maybe legislating what many sort of fear is possibly happening, that a few powerful interests along with a few city officials, you know, sort of decide what happens. And unless we keep that open, it can really erode the public's trust. No description of what the board members function on the board are supposed to be. We know what Kathy's going to do. And I've only heard excellent things from Kathy's friends and people that work with her on how excellent she is in the job she does. In light of what happened with Momentum and the secret anonymous group and money, are they involved on this? Do they want to stay secret? Are they involved? I just think it's bad for democracy and public policy. You know, it seems like we can accomplish everything we want to accomplish by having Kathy do this position inside the city. Why not hire a new assistant city manager? And then all the openness, transparency, open records would occur. Then it would make everybody feel comfortable, and at the same time, you retain Kathy. Eight city positions around $1 million in salaries are going to be able to be utilized by this. What should happen probably will happen. If a free enterprise system wants to occur, it will occur. It feels like we're advocating control, information, and openness. So in short, of canceling the contract with the Alliance, they can basically still do whatever they want to do. They do not have to necessarily abide by what's in here. You would have to cancel the contract, and I doubt that you would do that. I think what we're possibly doing is teaching the wrong behavior. Because what occurs is that if we tilt the playing field in such a way that allows for certain interests to be more well-represented, then the citizens can somewhat lose out. And what happens is when you start giving subsidies and tax credits to different entities, what it does is it teaches you thinking that that's why they came, when in actuality, they probably came for other very specific reasons. And then Kansas City, what's happening? Kansas City, Missouri, and Kansas City, Kansas are battling each other. And it's hurting their tax base. It's enriching the corporations, but it's bad for the citizens. So I'm just saying, be careful. I think the scope is going to be over $1 billion in what the city does that they will have sort of purview over. And I want you to consider, do you really think that this will ultimately do more to help your priority one? And does it pass the smell test for the citizens? Thank you.
Thank you, David. Steve Hunt? Morning, Steve. We'll need your name and address for the record.
Steve Hunt, 6001 North Brookline, Ward Ed Shadid. I had quite a few notes that I was going through, and I picked up some documents downstairs today. I filed a Freedom of Information request, emails from Mrs. O'Connor and council members regarding the Alliance, and just were starting to look through them and started finding a few things that are quite concerning to me. First, I wanted to go over a couple of things. Give me just a second here. When David and I and some others were doing some studying on the vote for the basketball arena in MAPS, a former Chamber of Commerce person told me that you never do something like that without an economic feasibility study. And the city did not do that. However, they hired major public relation firms instead. And one of the first things that I see here with regards to the Alliance, first, did I hear something about a feasibility study being done on this by an independent economic group?
Steve, who are you asking?
Anyone, really. I mean...
Did we do an independent study? No, sir, we did not.
I'm sorry?
No, sir, we did not.
Okay. And I wonder about that because what this document tells me is that Jones Public Relations has been hired to do public relations work on the Alliance. And that alarmed me a little bit. And then it alarmed me further when I pulled up and I saw that the assistant account executive for Jones Public Relations is Casey Cornet. And I wondered, you know, as I go through these documents, I just find, you know, conflict of interest after conflict of interest. And that's just the tip of the iceberg. The bottom line is that I just see the consolidation of power, the secrecy, to be very alarming. Oklahoma and our capital, Oklahoma City, was in the news, national news, last week about making things more difficult on unions, you know, the 826 put forth by your old assistant, David Holt. And then the Senate bill that passed last week to make things harder for unions to organize. This week, we're voting to make things easier for the elites to organize. And that's very concerning to me. Another thing, the issues of setting policy, and it's been said, "No, no, no, the Alliance will not set policy." Well, a few weeks ago, I was going through some documents looking for information on the Momentum Group. And so I went to the TV and radio stations to go through the public files. I didn't find a whole lot. It was pretty, they've learned that you can't put names on things because, you know, when we did the stadium thing, it had the names of the chamber, the phone number, the credit card of the chamber, your name, all that. And that was shown to be kind of a problem. That wasn't there. But what I did find, and this, I want you to understand what I'm saying here, I found some things on the embarrassing Sharia law bill that was passed, embarrassing to some of us, not to others. And what I found was tons and tons of documents from a DC group headed by Brigitte Gabriel. This is a group similar to the Alliance who is setting policy in Oklahoma. And, you know, I look at that group, and then I look at the Alliance, and, you know, they don't set policy per se, but they do have such influence that they can do so many things. Now, you know, I could go on and on about this. I've got a ton of notes here, but I'm going to...
Steve, your three minutes are up. I appreciate you coming down.
Right. And just what I would like to say is if there's any way that we could hold this vote off, because I've got these documents, there's so much stuff in here that needs to be gone through. I don't know about the conflict of interest with Jones PR. It's alarming to me because I know that Ward 6 was opened up when, you know, her son went to work as a firefighter. And if we're going to have your son doing this, it's alarming. So thank you very much.
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify Steve's statement. No emails from the mayor or council were found regarding the Alliance. Thank you.
Comments from council or questions that might emerge?
We will be voting on the amendments first.
We can do it in whatever order you'd like, really. Would you like to vote on the amendments first and then have council comments? All right, how about a motion then on the amendments?
Move the amendments.
All right, cast your vote on the amendments. Amendments passed unanimously. That was item 8A1. Now we're on to item 8A2. Comments or questions from council?
We'll be out in a second.
Ready to vote?
Under the totality of agreement?
Yes. Yes, this is to approve item 8A2.
Well, just my comments on what's been said and what's proposed. My concerns primarily focus on, as Vince alluded to, the urgency with which we're moving and the implications for the Open Records and Open Meeting Act. I think the number of amendments, the number of changes that have been made in kind of in a very quick fashion here at the end, it really serves as an indictment of the process of how, that this was not fully vetted, and raises some concerns. I think that this was raised as an idea privately a couple of months ago without discussion of who would be on the board. It was a staff-driven document that really had no public deliberation and essentially no councilperson deliberation, with no one discussing or deliberating about the implications for the Open Records and Meeting Act. And then a 36-page contract showing up on the consent docket on the first day of Mr. Greenwell and I being on the council. And I think, if nothing else, I would hope that that, that process or those procedures cease and that we increase our deliberation prior to bringing it. And it certainly should never show up on the consent docket. We asked for a financial impact statement, or Larry did, and he's satisfied by those, but I'm not. I would, the principal argument is that we're increasing efficiencies, but I'm not sure how you determine that without some form of financial impact statement. And I don't think you commit a level of taxpayer funds upwards of $700,000 without some financial impact statement. This was introduced three days after the runoff election, and as was elucidated, the function of the board members has not been determined. So it represents a paradigm shift. It represents a very significant and substantial change in policy and should be fully deliberated on and perhaps not moved with that level of urgency. In terms of the Open Records and Meeting Act, we were given three examples of other cities that have engaged in this kind of entities, including the St. Louis Development Corporation, the Louisville Downtown Development Corporation, and the Economic Development Corporation of Kansas City. All three of those entities have some level of open records. The idea that we would have passed this as in its form two weeks ago on the consent docket would have been fairly radical and far out of step with what's being done in other cities. All three, Kansas City, Louisville, and St. Louis, have some degree of open records. St. Louis has open meetings. The board meets, and it's open to the public. So if we're going to cite those three examples as reasons to do so, I think we need to consider how the impact on the open records and open meeting. The primary difference, or the primary implication of forming a nonprofit as opposed to forming an additional trust is the implications on the Open Records and Open Meeting Act. And therefore, a thorough discussion and deliberation of those implications should be undertaken. I've discussed with Kenny Jordan at length the implications for the Open Records and Open Meeting Act. I think that we are potentially, we're certainly in uncharted territory legally. I think that we are introducing significant legal questions by doing so. I wish that we had had more time to consider the implications of what we're doing, which is going to set precedence legally. We've talked at length about Drew Edmondson's 2002 Attorney General opinion in relates to the Open Meeting Act, and as it relates to nonprofits. And we talked about the 1978 Sanders versus Benton case in which a Citizens Advisory Committee was formed. And that related to, that even though it was a nonprofit, it could be considered subject to the Open Meetings Act, it was a private organization which contracted to provide goods and services to the public on behalf of a governmental agency. And we decided that, or it was argued that if it's fully funded by the public and if it has de facto decision-making authority, it would be subject to the Open Records Act. The argument that the Alliance wouldn't be subject to the Open Meetings Act is that while it is funded by the public, it doesn't set public policy and therefore isn't, doesn't have de facto decision-making authority. There are, however, I think, three problems with that, and we're opening ourselves up to legal questions. First, this is not an entity that provides goods and services to the public. In other words, we're not contracting to just, we pay X amount of dollars for a particular service. There is no quid pro quo in terms of we pay X amount of dollars and we get this amount of return. We're going to pay the salaries, the lease, the copy machine, everything regardless of what we get in return. And so this entity is not, doesn't provide goods and services to, and sell those services to multiple different entities. It only works with the city of Oklahoma City. Its only service is to replace city of Oklahoma City function. And so the second is that we are, and really where we're in our uncharted territory is that we are moving city government responsibilities such as Project 180 oversight and oversight of the Devon Implementation Plan to this Alliance because Kathy O'Connor is so adept, and she has a specialty in it, and we want to keep that with her. But that has nothing to do with future economic development. That's just a convenience that we're going to lose her, and no one's going to be there to oversee that, so we want to move that to the Alliance. But now we have the Alliance not involved just in future economic development, but basically usurping or annexing city government responsibility and function. So that, I think, is different, that's a different scenario than Edmondson was talking about in 2002 and where he's in uncharted territory. What would seemingly apply more that Edmondson talks about is the Indianapolis Convention and Visitors Association versus Indianapolis newspapers, in which a private entity was established to promote the city's convention center industry. And they found that that was subject to the Sunshine laws because there was a direct allocation of public funds, and there was no quid pro quo relationship between the amount of services and the funds allocated. That would seemingly be a better fit for what we're faced with here. And since there is obviously no Oklahoma case law that addresses this question, I think that that is a better fit. I, finally, I have concerns about, I understand that this won't be a policymaking body, but as I study some of the previous conflicts and some of the things that were talked about last week at the MAPS conference, it is possible to affect policy with the omission of data. And I think about the study that was commissioned by the Chamber, the HOK study prior to MAPS, looking at convention site locations. I'm not sure if that was paid for taxpayer funds or not, but it was not. But in our discussion last week where we're talking about whether, you know, there was this discussion or that discussion about the $30 million to move the OGME substation or convention site locations, the fact is if the council persons had known about the conclusions of the HOK study, those discussions would have been remarkably different. And so the omission of study results and the omission of data can affect policy. If you're asked to choose between an apple and an orange, but there was a banana, and you would have chosen the banana if you knew about it, then you can affect policy just by omitting data. Yes, in the amendment, and I'm very proud of the work that we did in the amendment, yes, the amendment allows disclosure of data one year after the relationship between the Alliance and an economic development entity end. But that may be one, two, three years after the council votes on a particular project. And so my concern is that if the results of studies, the Convention Center Hotel, for example, would be a good example, if the data or conclusions of studies are withheld from the council, and then the council is asked to vote on particular projects, then the Alliance is affecting policy. And so I ask that that be considered in relation to open records and open meeting. I think that this body should be subject to the Open Meetings Act for those reasons I've alluded to. Thank you.
We have a couple of other people who have signed up to speak. I'll give them a chance before council can continue. Jenny White?
Good morning, Jenny. We'll need your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Jenny White, 3032 Hickory Stick Road, Oklahoma City. I'm actually in, at Councilman Ryan's district. I don't know, I'm not an attorney. I'm not a person who is readily involved in any kind of city law. I do take on education issues, and I'm at the Capitol frequently. But I'm speaking more as a citizen. And I'll tell you, if you're concerned with public perception about this at all, I will tell you that as a person, this smacks of cronyism. I mean, it really honestly does. And I'm sure you don't mean for that to be that way, but there are people, and I'm an evangelical Christian, and just recently, we had two candidates for city council who were just excoriated in the Oklahoma City paper in order to get a position on a city council. And I really honestly am getting to the point where I feel like we're trying to be squashed. It's like a purposeful matter of trying to eliminate public outcry or public input in things that go in on, not just in our city, but in our state as well. And I hate to do this because I'm not a person who likes to go and decry things and scream and raise my hands and say, "Ooh, boo, awful." But this really is upsetting to me. I had just, just on a personal matter, I had gone to see Atlas Shrugged, the movie. And I had just seen an article in the paper by the Oklahoma Gazette. That's basically how I found out about this, was that the circulate, that the article from the Gazette was circulated through some people that I know, and it ended up on my desk. And I was absolutely shocked when I read some of those things, because not as a super-intelligent person, but just as a person who kind of pays attention, none of that sounded good to me. And again, I'm sorry to say that, but none of it sounded good. If you can't do business in the open with money that I provide you to provide me services, that's a problem. And I see that as a problem. I wish you would really table the discussion on this alliance. I wish you would put it to rest. I wish you would allow, I like what Councilman Shadid says. I agree with him definitely. It seems like it was very quickly, very done under the table. I've been in the legislature, I've seen this happen, I know that it happens. I don't like it. I don't think anybody likes it. And I think those of us who are aware enough to read and think for ourselves don't like it. And I would ask you, please, to table the discussion on this, and let's find a way where this can be addressed openly. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jenny. Joseph B. Minor? That's not good. All right, council comments or questions before we vote?
Mayor, I have some. My good friend and former mayor Andy Coats used to say that in most arguments, you can teach them round or you can teach them flat. And I think there is another view of this. And while I agree with a great many of the things that Mr. Shadid says, I think a lot of the things he says have some serious credibility. Part of it... Part of it, I think, that the portion that I agree with the most is that the timing of this was very poor, I think. I think most people that are on whichever side of this you're on, I think, I've had that acknowledged to me from a number of people, and they believe the timing was, could have been handled better. And I specifically believe that it could have been handled better from Dr. Shadid's point of view. Obviously, for this, for him to have concerns about this, and this be the first thing he sees, the first day he's on the horseshoe, I think that's probably, we could have planned this a little better than that. But my experience was, I voiced a number of concerns about this at the meeting two weeks ago. Frankly, every concern that I voiced, I was met with no opposition from staff at all. I had good cooperation, and there's a list today of the, one of my big concerns was the lack of diversity on the board of directors of this organization. I think that was acknowledged, my first meeting I had with the first person I talked to acknowledged that the diversity should have been considered to a larger extent, and if you see the list today, it is, it is a much more diverse group of people. I think some of the concerns about openness will be mitigated in the future because of the openness. I think when you place people that are not considered, I mean, I think we're developing this me-against-them philosophy in Oklahoma City. It reminds me of the south part of Oklahoma City that I grew up in. It was always us versus them. We were, we were Southsiders, and it was always going to be bad for us. And as I grew up, I determined that that wasn't necessarily true. I mean, we were generally our own worst enemies. We were generally the victims of our own belief that something bad was going to happen. So if something bad did happen, we blamed it on, well, we're from the South side, and that's what's going to happen. And my experience as an adult and growing up has been that that's really not the case, that we are all in this together. But when I asked for diversity, and I wanted some people, some geographic diversity, it's there. When I wanted racial diversity, it's there. When I wanted a larger cross-section of what I thought different disciplines other than the development community, it's there. I asked questions about how we're going to get this to be as open as possible, and I think, given the nature of what this organization is going to do and what its predecessor did, which was an ad hoc organization that wasn't formal, it was almost this same organization, it just was not formalized the way this one is. We didn't have titles, and we didn't have names on these jobs like we have now, but that organization existed. It existed when we negotiated, maybe I'm not going to start with that one, because I didn't like that one very well. The Skirven, the Skirven, what a, this organization, in its different structural form, existed when we did the Skirven. Without it, we would have never been able to do what we've done for the Skirven. It costs money, but we would have never accomplished it. It probably is the jewel of redevelopment in Oklahoma City. Or in my view, it may be the jewel of development. I mean, it is just an absolute wonder. Partly that's because that I have all kinds of memories that stretch back over 60 years of the building, but there are other things. I mean, Dale came as a result of this type of organization, virtually these same people, or certainly these same organizations putting it together, and that's why we're here. And that's what's going to continue. I think, I had a little bit of sticker shock when, after I heard we were going to do it, and then I saw what it actually entailed to do it. It was somewhat, just seeing it in print, I think, was a little bit of different, I had a different reaction to it than I had anticipated I would when I agreed to the idea four or five months ago. But given the last couple of weeks and working with staff, and I have personally talked to many, many of the people that are on this board in this last two weeks. Again, I've had several years to be, to have a relationship with these people that Dr. Shadid has not had. I have a reason to trust certain people, members of the staff, based on years and years and years of relationships with them that others on this organization don't have. And that, to me, is perfectly understandable. Had this been my third council meeting, I would probably share his comments even to a greater extent than I do today. And don't mistake what I'm saying. I share a lot of his concerns about it. I have some, I have a certain confidence, though, that given the diversity that we've added to the board, given the things that we've insisted on, Councilman McAtee's concern about fiscal responsibility, I think this is an organization that we need to go forward with. But I don't want those of you that support not doing it to believe that there is not another viewpoint out there. There is another viewpoint, and there is a viewpoint that has brought success to this city, brought things that we wouldn't have without it. And at this point, the comments that I made over the last couple of weeks, my mind has been satisfied. But I don't, this is my third time to say this, but I want to make sure that everybody understands. I don't misunderstand why Councilman Shadid is concerned about this. Were this my third week here, given what happened over the three or four months prior to this being my third week here, I would share exactly what he's saying. I understand that completely. But I'm ready to vote for it today.
Skip, and then Larry.
Well, unfortunately, I...